Good, Jesse, to come up here and well. Call this meeting to order the City Council. It's March 21st. I've asked Councilman Welling to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you'd like to join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us, and I'm told we have, in addition to that agenda, a motion to accept the bid on some vehicles. I'm thinking everybody has a copy of that bid, and so we've put that first thing under New Business, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling?
One second.
Mr. Sellers? Seconding, any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That we have an agenda. We have the council minutes for March 7th. Concerns, comments, questions regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go to the work session of March 14. Same thing there. Any questions? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well, and we'll go on to the bills. So we've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Questions? Comments, concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Lynch?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Mr. Perks?
Not a thing.
Mr. Welling?
There was something. Oh, congratulations to the Evanston High School dance team. They took first in both their categories at state after being postponed once, and so congratulations to them. Spring's here, so enjoy it.
Sellers?
Want to remind everybody about the Celtic Festival that's this weekend, Friday, Saturday. I know the art team does a lot to put that on, and there's a lot of effort, and what the art team does for our kids and our community is wonderful, so please want some good entertainment and time to, something to do. Please go support them. I know I talk about 9/8/8 and suicide. Since 9/8/8 has been introduced in 2020, they've received over 10,000 calls, and suicides are down 22% in the state.
Hmm, cool.
So we're, it's, that came out at our last Unit County Suicide Task Force, and to echo Councilman Welling, I saw first robin of the year. Somebody else told me they saw one yesterday, so maybe, maybe there is a little hope on the horizon, even with three inches of snow coming.
You see robin, but the elk are still in town, too, so.
There's, yes, there's elk in town, and that's, that's almost a first from what I've heard.
Something new to me. Thank you. Ms. Ekman?
I would like to say less than 1% of the United States population serve in our U.S. military. He's going to kill me for this. And I am, I come from a family that has six generations in the U.S. military, and sitting right there is number seven, who is fresh off of his first overseas deployment with the 101st Airborne. Welcome back, welcome home, my son. I am so proud of you.
Excellent. Thank you for your service. Excellent, very well.
I was in Romania for nine months, went to Germany, and spent some time in Wales.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Glad you were home safe. The only thing I'll add, as far as council comments, is I apologize, I was pulled away Tuesday for our work session. A little situation arose that I could not, in essence, get out of. One of those kinds of things. I thank our council president, Mr. Sellers, for handling that meeting. I heard after, after the meeting that everything went well, and thank you very much for, for covering for me, and again, I apologize for not, for not being here Tuesday night. We also, during our council comments, need to have our Crime Stoppers drawing. I see Lexi came in the back, so.
Our illustrious leader of the Crime Stoppers.
Come on. We saw you.
So every year we do our Crime Stoppers, we're out for tickets, we go around, sell them, and you guys get to pick our rips.
Excellent.
We're doing three pointers this time.
Yep, first one's a thousand, and then two $500.
Excellent. You're going to do, we're going to give it to you, is that what you said?
No.
Oh.
Hopefully not to me.
I'm on the board.
You can do it.
Absolutely. This is the thousand or?
This was the $500.
$500.
Ronald Ratch.
Oh!
Oh, the mackerel.
Trying to get in good with the chief.
Bill? Bill?
Oh, that's me. Bill? That's all it says. His air phone number next to him. Pick a good one out, don't let him know.
Matt Rex.
Matt Rex.
Well, that's good, excellent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Colin, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll let you do it.
He'll be excited. He'll probably think it's a salesman and hang up, hang up on you, but.
I would like to say since the middle of the 1980s, the Crime Stoppers has been very helpful, and we found that the easiest way is to do a 50-50 drawing to help fund our reward bank, and it's been very successful, so we appreciate the community supporting the Crime Stoppers. It does wonderful things for the area.
Thank you. Well said, thank you. We, we have no public hearings or special orders. We do have a consent agenda item, the Evanston liquor dealers with their annual extended hours request. Read those on there, Saturday, April 22nd, May 27th, October 28th, and December 31st. Is there anyone here representing the Liquor Dealers Association? I know this is a yearly thing, so I'm not too, if there's not, we'll go ahead and move forward. Is there a, a motion to approve our consent agenda? Mr. Sellers?
Second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. We'll go on to unfinished business, and we'll go there to ordinance 2302. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you.
Two zero.
Your Honor, this is the third and final reading of an ordinance approving and authorizing a zone change from property in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, from community business developing to business light manufacturing redevelopment, as requested by J.G. Bros, and of the land more particularly described herein.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson.
This is, as she said, a third and final reading. I don't have anything to report from the second reading, nothing has changed. That has involved this property that's highlighted in yellow, it's located between Yellow Creek Road and Yellow Creek Road, and just south of the interstate. So tonight, you will also hear a resolution, consider a resolution to consider amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. Currently shows this area is highlighted in the left on this map, as part of the business land use, and the proposed land use is, that's being proposed by the applicant, is the business light manufacturing. So the consideration with this ordinance, this would change the zoning map, current zoning is community business developing, the change zoning would be changed to a business light manufacturing redevelopment. Purpose of this, that it does open it up for light manufacturing use, is what the applicant is hoping to do. There is a subdivision, as I noted in our last meeting, the area shown in pink is the area that's supposed to be needed some change in the master plan.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else we need to know about before we move on? Nothing has changed from second reading?
Nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions before we move on? We have a sponsor. This is the third reading, so I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2302 on third and final reading.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Lynch, seconding? Any discussion? Absolutely. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved on third reading. Thank you. We'll go on to New Business, and then we'll start with our motion regarding the pickup bid. Mr. Chief Rannish? Why do we, they're not giving them away, I see that.
Mayor, members of the council, we originally had a buyer for four, happened to drive three that was a place park, and one were public works. They jumped in our bid with this, and we had four bidders put in. The little bear unfortunately was out of spec for their vehicles. The next bidder was only $1,000, $1,000 more than the little bear, and all the vehicles are inspected, and that is a Ken Garn from Cheyenne. The total bid for a poor big was $196,692, which $147,519 would be the first part. Now, that is over, but we do have in budget, but I do have additional light items that would probably, vehicles were coming in hard to light one. Assuming the quality of the cars, like I said, they do show up early. I do have money in motor vehicles, but we kill these for outfitting vehicles, and also money in for purchasing rates, and we can go over to cover those expenses.
Okay. I don't remember ever having a Ford police truck in town. Have we ever had that before?
Yeah, a long time ago, our K-9 truck was a Ford.
That was back in the 90s, so it's been over 25 years, I believe.
Okay. Well, hope they got some good tow hooks on the front, because, you know, you never know. That's just me. Any questions for Chief Rannish before we?
Chief, are these a police package that the county offers?
No, there are a lot, Ford has a police package vehicle. From specs, I can tell you it's an auto police package vehicle. There, I mean, it's been left, some of the options we kind of like, like a driver seat, where we can put a seat cover in to make up for that. They do have, a police package vehicle has a few differences, not a lot. They have, the seat belts are a little different, they got some different interior lighting, it's kind of free wire, some of the floors come with private doors, and these are all stuff that we can modify and get up better to, 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 to.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're confident this will do the job for you?
I am.
And that, as far as public works go, is that the same?
Yeah.
Okay. 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 Is there, is there a motion on this?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding? Any discussion?
You don't drive a Ford, no?
No, sir. No, sir. I got to sleep tonight.
Your wife does, though.
Yeah, you had to bring that up. That was a point of contention. Ultimately, you can see who wears the pants, because she does.
I wear the pants, but my wife chooses the color. It's all good.
Exactly right. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you. We'll go to Resolution 2320. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 2320 is the resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the approval and execution of an FAA approval agreement for transfer of entitlements with the United States of America, the Federal Aviation Administration.
Thank you. Ms. Lim?
Well, Gary Welling couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to present this. It's something we've done before. The airports are entitled to a certain amount of improvement program funding each year, and we can borrow those from other airports, and we borrowed from the Fort Bridge Airport before, and so this is just technically giving that back to them.
Giving that, it's not, it's not an actual exchange of money, it's just giving that entitlement back to them, because we have not used it.
Right.
That's the way, that's the way I understand it.
And because it's a joint powers board, this is something that has to be approved by the county and the city.
And I know that the county commission approved it earlier today. I was in the meeting when they did, so I know that we've done this two or three times since I've been mayor. It's, it's just a transaction more on paper than anything, so I'm, yeah. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce a resolution with a motion to pass.
Ms. Lim with a motion. Mr. Sellers, seconding? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2321. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a contract for services with Fire Protection Service Corporation.
Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, this is the same contract we passed for the Beaman-Cashen Building when they installed the new fire alarm system there. This is for the police department. They had to update the entire fire alarm system, get it up to code, so while we're doing that, we're going to go ahead and get the cellular dialer and the monitoring that's provided by Mountain Alarm, like we did for the Beaman-Cashen Building.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sheets before we move on this? If there is not, is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch? You'll second, Mr. Welling, is that what I heard? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This company's out of Salt Lake, is that right? Does it say Salt Lake or Ogden? Yeah, there's no companies in Evanston that keep monitoring. When we passed the last one, currently, the dispatch center monitors alarms directly, but it's a very, very old system, and we're trying to get away from analog phone lines. The entire school district has switched to this Mountain Alarm company with cellular dialers at all of their buildings as well. And it does, and it actually comes out to be cheaper. There, you can see on the agreement, there's two different costs, ones for the cellular dialer, and then ones for monitoring, and actually, though, that combined $80 a month is actually cheaper than me having to maintain two analog phone lines for each location.
This is where we're called, Beaman?
We haven't had any fire alarms yet, so I assume it's working well.
Haven't had any fire alarms?
We haven't had any fires at the Beaman, so.
Must be working. Okay.
It doesn't prevent fires, it just lets you know.
This one happened without us knowing about it. We'd have known by now. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2322. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a subcontract award with the Wyoming Division of Criminal Investigation to provide funds to the Evanston Police Department for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, this has been a longstanding partnership we've had with Wyoming Attorney General's Office with the Division of Criminal Investigation. We do have a full-time police officer assigned to them as a task force officer, and this grant right here will provide his wages. We obviously have them housed in our building, employees of DCI, and they have been a pretty effective team in our community, and they have made some recent pretty substantial arrests.
Excellent. Any questions on this before we move forward?
We've had up to, on the task force round.
At one time, we're back down to one currently, and the sheriff's office has had partners before, but currently they don't have any, so we're fortunate to still have one.
Is there an introduction?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Mr. Welling, seconding? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Chief. Resolution 2323. Ms. Kirby, please.
This is the resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a grant and award agreement with the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security to obtain funds which are designated for in-car camera systems for law enforcement purposes.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have an L3 camera system. Technology's gotten outdated, we can't buy replacement cameras, it's getting difficult to get parts to repair the cameras. When we do source parts, we have to usually find them somewhere on eBay, because a lot of the parts are no longer manufactured. The average life expectancy on in-car camera, I think, is five to seven years, and our cameras have all exceeded that, so we'd like to use the homeland funding this year to replace our, all the in-car cameras and get our system up to date.
Excellent. Is there a specific amount of this that I'm?
Well, it's, we're gonna.
How's it work, I guess, is what I'm asking.
We're gonna shoot for the, shoot for the stars, and so we can get the in-car cameras are $65,000, and then some additional hardware to get the cameras installed is approximately an additional $40,000, and then the software to maintain them is about $10,000 per year.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a seconding? Any discussion?
This is just you trying to execute, trying to go after grant money, right?
That's correct. This is us trying to get a grant, too. Homeland Security's been a grant we've consistently got every year, and this is one of the things they are approving this year in grant is for in-car video cameras.
So you feel confident, you're probably confident in getting grant money for that?
I am confident. I'm not sure how much we'll get, if we'll be able to replace all the cameras. It's difficult to have, this is a hard thing. I'd like to replace, generally, like replace 20% of our inventory of everything every year, but it doesn't work out that way, because technology changes. Even tasers, they change every three years to newer technology. The cameras are the same way, then you got to have the software to support all the cameras, and if you get one officer going from one car to another car, getting issued a different taser, then there's a familiarity of trying to catch up to it. So generally, what we're starting to see is, instead of cycling out 20% of everything every year, it just easily becomes better just to do one big project, like this year might be cameras, and next year might be hand packs, and so on.
Okay. Further discussion?
I had a question. Is this similar to the same camera system that you were talking about the other week? Yep?
It is. This is, this is a different company. This is, this company has a little better software. This is a newer, newer for us company, and one of the things that we, we're looking at is they've got the state contract, it's GTAC, and Wyoming Highway Patrol has tested out a lot of different camera systems already, and they've settled on this camera system, and we're getting the state bid price, which is a better price, and the, also, it's cheaper for in-cloud than the other company. And if we do end up going with these cameras, they've already offered to pay more for our other two cameras than what we paid for them, so we can apply it towards, towards this, and plus, when you have one camera system that you're sharing with Wyoming Highway Patrol, any video's got to go to the Unit County Attorney's Office or to our local prosecutor's office, they're familiar with the software, and they're already ready to receive it.
Anything else? Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say it, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Mayor, members of council, thank you.
Resolution 2324. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you. This is the resolution that Mr. Jacobson brought up with the ordinance that you all just passed. This is the resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing, sorry, excuse me, to amend the portion of the city's master plan to authorize a business light manufacturing redevelopment zone for the real property indicated on the attached exhibit, as requested by J.G. Bros.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, as she has said, the approval of this resolution would authorize a change to our city's comprehensive plan for the 11.9 acres that I had displayed earlier for the zone change. A change in land use, again, will be from, in this case, a highway business land use to a business light manufacturing land use.
Okay. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Welling, seconding? Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. And now, Resolution 2325. Ms. Kirby, we read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the Smith Fuel Center Edition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, this is a minor subdivision. It is the Smith Fuel Center Edition that's being proposed, and what I have here is the map and location. It involves the Yellow Creek Shopping Center that's just adjacent to the Smith Food King and, and Pizza Hut. Pizza Hut's not part of this subdivision, it's an island floating within the proposed subdivision. Currently, this is the, how it's subdivided, there's three lots. Lot three of the Yellow Creek Center subdivision, number one, is involved. Lot four of the amended plat of the Yellow Creek subdivision, number two, and lot six of the amended plat of the Yellow Creek subdivision, subdivision number two, are all flown in Paul. So it proposes to, the subdivision proposes to take these three lots and subdivide it into a four-lot subdivision. This is it, and I'll do a blow-up view of that. So the subdivision creates an additional lot. Lot three is proposed for a gas station, Smith Gas Station. To do that, they had to amend some lot lines between what is now lot one and lot two, where the, the retail, Yellow Creek Business Retail Center is located. Lot four on this is where the liquor store is located, and like I said, lot three is the new lot for the, for the gas station. The area is showing in the. for the- for the gas station. The area is showing in the red. There's a lot of easements that have been recorded over the years with either separately with the owners or through plating, the subdivisions through the two plats that I- subdivision plats I mentioned earlier. Those easements are proposed to carry over to this, so they've included all of those easements. No changes with those. There are no proposed new easements with the subdivision, so it's just a change in lot lines. So, what we have here is the development proposal for the gas station. I threw this in. I thought the council might be interested to see how it is proposed to be developed.
Yeah.
It does comply with all zoning regulations. Subdivision complies with- with subdivision regulations of our city code. The city subdivision review committee has reviewed both the site development plan and the final plat, and all necessary changes have been made to what's being presented tonight, so we recommend approval. There are some conditions. Normally, in the past, we've required that city water services and sewer services be extended to a lot. In this particular commercial area, staff, please, that it's probably- we would recommend that those services not be installed until at such time they put in the gas station so that it's not torn up twice, so minimize the impacts in the commercial. They will need to submit a Mylar plat to the city. Once we receive that, we'll be able to issue a building permit for this. It still has to go through some plan review with the state, the EQ. And Matt Anderson, he is with us tonight. He's kind of been the representative for Smiths and kind of spearheading this project through, so I don't know if there's anything else you would like to add or...
Unless there's any questions?
Okay.
How many pumps are we looking? The five there?
Thirty-five, right.
And this is like one of those- it's not a convenience store at Dash, is it?
Right. You can see there's a- there's a small kiosk.
Kiosk right there, okay.
The kiosk would be staffed during daytime hours, and that would be a failed pump and credit center. So, but yeah, it's just a small kiosk.
Okay. My Smiths Field points will work there?
Right.
Where are we gonna put the snow?
We won't have any under this.
This use is a conditionally permitted land use, so the site plan was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was an item that was discussed. So, if we got a year like we do this year, though, they will likely need to look at hauling snow offsite.
I guess the only thing I- and I think it's- I think it's great, but I guess I wasn't- I wasn't exactly where- Smiths owns the parking lot as a whole, or is that- is that the way it is, or what- who owns that?
The parcel lot, call it three, on there, or the fuel center. That's going to be- yeah, lot three is going to be purchased from Yellow Creek.
Okay.
It should be an adjustment to create lot four the way it is now. So, Smiths will lease through to lot three, then on lot four, they will continue on that, which is...
Okay, I'm just looking on the certificate of owners, and it shows that Smiths Food and Drug is the certificate of the owner, but they will be the owner then, when that-
They will be- they will be leasing lot three.
Okay. Okay.
Just gas, or you gonna have diesel, too?
Um, no, most likely got diesel.
Okay.
I don't know that they've made a final determination on that, but typically, there's a demand for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Dwyane, that we need to know before we move forward?
I have nothing else for you.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Welling?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? Do you know what the timeframe is on the construction?
Yeah, they'd like it started in June. It's about eight or nine weeks, structure pretty- they want to get it done this summer.
Okay. Okay. Just curious.
Hope the snow's gone by June.
Yeah. Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson? Resolution twenty-three, twenty-six. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, adopting council rules or procedure and order.
Thank you. Is there- is there any other introduction that you want to give on this, or...
No, Your Honor, just that I had given these at the February twenty-eighth meeting, or work session, rather, and I had not received any concerns, comments from any council members or yourself. I did have a couple of questions prior to the meeting, but not prior to it being put on the agenda on Friday, which I have addressed, and so at this juncture, it's been put on the agenda to pass.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions before we move on, move forward with this? Go ahead.
I've got one. When People of Ward Three elected me, they knew I was just a regular guy, so maybe you could explain what number fourteen means. I was gonna look it up and then forgot about it.
Absolutely. So, ex parte communications and it's easier because- for me, because of course, that's attorney lingo, but that just means having communications with other members of the council that are not permissible. I mean, generally speaking, as Mr. Harris presented in his council conduct on that work session, you all can talk about things, right, and you guys do do that. There are certain times when that is not permissible and that's set out by statute. That is all that that is saying is that you'll abide by those times when you're not supposed to talk about- about stuff, and one of those would be, for example, if we've had an executive session on a matter, then that's not to be discussed afterward, things like that.
Thank you.
And maybe I do know that there's a little bit of a concern on- let's see, what is it? Rule number four.
Four-nine-one, Your Honor.
Is that what it- thank you.
Yeah, as I say, can you just clarify those three that I...
Yes, absolutely. For- section four point nine is specifically for the part of the agenda at the very bottom that says public comment. So, it's not for anything that's on the agenda. Of course, you know, as our gentleman from Smiths here, I don't- I don't know who, where you're a resident of, but anything that's on the agenda, certainly people can come up and speak to that point. The reason for the public comments section to be a little bit more limited is because we're not put on notice, so there isn't really any transparency as far as what's gonna be brought up, and those should be more limited to residents and those folks that would have an impact or something to say about current government business. And so, it's only for that public section, public comments section, not all the agenda items as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you possibly clarify, was it four point- four point nine-five, talking about the land use?
Yes. So, this, again, this is only for very specific situations where there may be like a sale of property or something pending that has not come before the council yet for a public hearing. That's already, you know, in our rules and statute to not discuss those because we don't want to impugn one way or another of a vote. So, if there is something pending that hasn't been brought to a public hearing yet, that's not something that we should discuss during a public comments section.
Okay.
That will be- there'll be opportunity for that after notice of the publishing in the paper, and we hold a public hearing here.
Hold the public hearing itself. Gotcha.
And then the other one, these were all comments I got from my ward, so I wanted to bring them up so we could clarify. Five point one, under the meeting procedures for the work meeting?
Yes. So, this is comments from the public during work session. Items are not allowed unless specifically invited or recognized by the mayor for informational purposes as part of a presentation. That is already the ability that the mayor has in all meetings, the work session including, to limit any kind of comments and things like that. And again, these will all be taken and at the discretion of the mayor, and you, all council members, have the same discretion to use against the mayor if he is the one that is not abiding by one of the rules. And so, that- those will be used at your discretion, and it's nothing new, it's nothing novel. The mayor already has the authority to do that in any meeting because he is ultimately the leader of keeping order of the meetings, so...
And the concern that I had from someone from my ward was that they didn't want to silence the general public.
Sure.
That hopefully that's not the intent of this, is to silence any of the general public.
Absolutely not, no. It's simply to make sure that when we're- we have things on the agenda, we're, you know, we're talking about those things, we're leaving things that aren't on the agenda to address in public comments, and limiting to if we've already discussed a topic. And I know Mr. Bowle was better about this than I have been. He would oftentimes tell people to move along, especially in planning and zoning meetings if something's already been discussed, and that's in Roberts' rules and a common standard as well, is just to keep the meetings on task and to make sure everybody's being heard, but also that we're moving through appropriately, so...
You get closer to retirement, you might start doing that, too.
Right, yeah, I know, right?
Then I think the last question I had from my ward was posting on the website. I know that's a big file. That's a lot to put on there. If anybody has requests to read anything further into resolutions, they can contact- they located contacts.
Absolutely, and if Ms. Harris doesn't have it, she would get it from whichever department does. But generally speaking, all of the attachments Ms. Harris already has before the meeting, and for all of the resolutions that we had tonight, none of those attachments, you know, all the contracts that you all have and the planning and zoning plats and whatnot, none of that is posted on the website, so it's not just specific to certain things. She just doesn't post all of that because your packets are so large, but they can be requested and they can be obtained.
So, if you get on the website and you read the resolution that you may have a concern with, it's okay to reach out?
Absolutely.
To the city to say, hey, I would like to read more on this resolution. So, if anybody in the general public doesn't feel like they're getting all the information, the ability to get that information is there. So, I think that's all I had.
A couple of months back, we have several members of the council attended and typically do WAM meetings or Wyoming Association of Municipalities. This is- these kinds of instructions and learning opportunities are offered, I guess is the way to say that, through those meetings, and they are often very beneficial to people that sit on councils such as this to make sure that our meetings are- move along efficiently and effectively, and I see that the communities across the state are doing things similar to this, and I think honestly that this will make us more efficient and outline some things that we just make to make sure that we're doing- to make sure that we're doing things honest and open and efficiently, and so I'm encouraged by this. Yes, please.
And also, WAM has the training videos on their website for conduct and the stuff that we went through not too long ago. It's all there on their website also, so that's open to anybody.
Absolutely.
It's Wyoming- Wyoming.org, and they have their- all their training videos. And soon we'll have the training video for all of us to take on funds.
Funds, finances, yeah.
Should I get out of that one?
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah, good job.
We want to see your good back.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
May I say something?
Please, yes.
Oh, yeah. I had my team of attorneys go through this just to- and...
It's great.
It's wonderful. There's just a couple of things I want to point out because they said it could open the city to a lawsuit, so... The first one is, on the first page, it says, whereas said meetings are subject to Wyoming Open Meetings Law pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh one through sixteen dash four dash two oh eight. It's supposed to be four oh eight, and the next three were considered redundant by Roberts, and redundancy is an issue. I mean, we just talked about that with the cellphone issue, you know. We have statutes in place. We've adopted Roberts. We don't need to. It's kind of overreaching. The rules and procedures, that defines the procedures, so everything in the meeting procedures is actually Roberts' rules again. They also had an issue with the verbiage of closed meetings versus executive meetings. We don't have closed meetings in Wyoming. Apparently, that is against the law. We have executive meetings that fall under the statutes, which are very detailed, which we've been through before. One of the things with the land issue is four point nine point six, the end of it. It is a question-answer forum not designed to accept general comments. That was actually pointed out to me that it violates Article Six of the Wyoming Constitution, and it denies due process surrounding landowners by surrounding landowners, so that could get us in trouble. But if we just delete that part, we're golden. It also- it goes up to the four point nine as well. The four point nine one, speakers must be residents of the City of Evanston. We can clarify that and avoid a lawsuit by just adding property owners or others with interests that can be cleaned up, obviously, with the verbiage. One of the things that may need- may want to be considered on this is because this resolution affects the general public, especially in the land use area, we may want to adopt the philosophy that it says in here at four point eight point two, a council member may request removal of any consent agenda item for individual consideration, blah, blah, blah. You can read it. And we move that so we can have it in a public hearing, so the people can actually comment on this before we approval, and that will also, in essence, save our hides. And in the ethics, no council member shall vote on any item for which there is a conflict of interest as defined under Wyoming law. Which statute? We're passing a resolution. It must have a statute. There's lots of statutes which pertain to this. If they're- we're- if they're talking about the one we did at the work session, which is six five oh one six, we should state it in there just to clarify. And also, the perception of conflict where appropriate was advised to strike because that just opens up a huge can of worms in a small community. And rule number twelve, once a vote is taken, respect the decision of the majority as a decision of the city. Public criticism, any vote taken by the majority should be avoided. It was again advised that that be restricted or removed because it violates free speech, and none of us up here want to tread on the First Amendment or the first article of the Wyoming Constitution as well. So, there was just a couple of these things that needed to be cleaned up, and then it's golden, and then it's great.
Well, I didn't exactly follow through all that to make sure that I'm following with you all along. Ms. Kirby, do you have anything? I mean, as far as the last one goes, I mean, I- I don't know that I see it the same way. In my mind, it just says that it should be avoided. It certainly doesn't hinder or prohibit or forbid.
It does not, Your Honor. I also disagree. I will again point out that four point nine is only for the public comments section, so it is not a question-answer forum but designed to accept general comments. Again, that is for the public comments section. It's not going to prohibit anybody from talking about something that's on the agenda item. I also wasn't able to keep up with everything but was in disagreement generally with Ms. Higginman's assertion and whatever lawyers she's talking to, so...
Anything else?
Well, maybe we should table it and discuss it.
Well...
Really big-time lawyers with a lot of experience that are just advising us to- Really big time lawyers with a lot of experience that are just advising us to, to be safe, on the safe side.
We, we need to bring this onto the table and see where, where that goes. I think I'm comfortable with moving forward with it tonight, but we'll see. I'll entertain a, is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion.
Mr. Willing with the motion, is there a second?
Are you not taking the time?
Maybe, maybe not, we'll just have to see. Is there a second?
To move it along, I'll go ahead and second it.
Mr. Perks with a second. Discussion.
I have no problem tableing it if she wants to meet with her to clear up any questions.
I don't think it's something would hurt to table it, bring it back after discussion. It wouldn't bother me. I, I think moving along would be fine too with Ms. Kirby because I feel confident in what she thinks is fine, but at the same time, I don't, it doesn't hurt to wait.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt to table it.
Okay.
I'm in support of it, but yeah, it'd make everybody feel more comfortable.
And I guess is there, I guess the next thing would be to, if there's a motion to table?
I'll enter that motion.
Just to remove the motion to table, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding the motion to table. Any discussion on that motion?
If we table it, we want to make sure that we are all on the same page of, you know, outlined on what you said, these are what I would like to see. And then, because I didn't go, I didn't highlight or keep notes when you were going through it all either, the way to highlight what it is you feel like needs to be changed.
Absolutely. Maybe we can just discuss it at the next work session.
Yeah, then, because I couldn't follow along when you were going through all the time, but if you want to highlight it, then I think it'd be clearer for all of us to see what you feel like needs to be changed.
Any further?
Obviously, we want to do things right. I, I think Ms. Kirby did a wonderful job of putting, putting this together and I, overall, I'm very supportive of, of this, but if we get everybody a better consensus by table on it and discussing them. That'd be a good idea.
Any further discussion on the motion to table? Again, I'm, I'm comfortable with this moving forward today. I think, I think the man has done a good job. It's, it's the group that makes the decision, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to table, 2623 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Me, you, David? So?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. So, so the motion to table passes.
Yeah.
And we'll have to set that to the date for two weeks or the next, the table to the next meeting?
It will be tabled to the next meeting, that is pursuant to the rule.
Okay, thank you. That's tabled until the next meeting and we will have some further discussions and go from there. Comments from departments. Chief Ranish, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Ms. Lim? Mr. Robinson?
Hello, sir.
Mr. Eaters?
Hello, sir.
Mr. Jacobson, you're representing the Planning and Engineering Department, anything from you tonight?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Nothing, your honor.
Ms. Kirby?
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Okay. Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason?
I would like to.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, James Westerman, I have a question about rule number seven for 2326.
Well, we've tabled that for tonight and so we'll probably have a work session on it later on where that discussion will probably be more appropriate to have.
All right, so the questions I have on this, I'll bring to the next work session.
That would be fine, you would have a chance to visit.
And thank you for tabling it tonight, I appreciate that.
Anyone else that would like to address the council tonight for any reason? Please.
I certainly will be working at the, the next work session as well on this. I think it's extremely important to have rules, but also to be accountable on making sure those rules are meaningful. One of the things I want to point out is that it was pointed out that we actually got that information at the work session. Problem was, we didn't have a chance to discuss it. There has not been an opportunity for the public to help with the venting of these rules to ensure that, that they are actually going to be useful and they're not necessarily going to have some legal implementation or causes or something. I understand this is a hard job, but we can help. Venting, we can help with the language and, and I think that's the problem I have. We had not given the opportunity. Please use us. I think this is important. There has to be rules, but there has to be accountability and there has to be enforcement. And when you do that, then these, how it's stated and how it's actually implemented, and that's why some of these words, there's confusion in the language. She pointed out a couple, there's more than that. And I think it's important. So I'm excited to see this work session and I'm hoping focus on this particular item. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mills?
Thank you. My name is Bradley Mills, I live at 109 Fox Point Court. And my intent today is to discuss the fentanyl situation in our country and how it directly affects us here. I was able to speak to the school board and had a real nice discussion. I had watched a C-SPAN senate hearing on some professionals and some mothers who'd lost their sons to fentanyl. And after that, I wrote an editorial and tried to submit it to the county paper, the Herald. I had a stipulation that it not be edited and haven't seen it. So tonight I would like to ask if I could read my editorial before the board.
Sure.
It's political.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I call it, "One pill will kill." I write today to communicate to my fellow men and women, the United States is under attack from a powerful evil force. This force is poisoning its inhabitants. In 2018 saw 108,000 opioid-fentanyl murders in our country. They like to address it as an overdose. It's intentional. Seventy-seven percent of these murders were fentanyl, eighty-five percent of these murders, adolescent young adults. The fake news calls them overdoses. It's murder. So was the intentional release of the China virus, over a million murders, over 200 murders a day in 2018 from fentanyl. Well over 100,000 murders a year since 2018. The United States government killed about 55,000 of its citizens in Vietnam. It took about 14 years to do so. The US government is murdering its citizens at a rate of well over 100,000 citizens a year in this country now by their open borders. The Biden administration is a pro-criminal administration. The Biden administration is an open border administration, then lies about everything. State and federal governments use a cocktail of chemicals devised by college graduates to execute death row inmates. Reports indicate that the deaths are slow, additional doses are sometimes required and sometimes the drug is just not available. Not fentanyl, it's a fast death, so fast you don't have time to deploy and use Narcan if it's available. The children can obtain fentanyl on social media, online, delivered to their houses. The pills are advertised as Percocet, OxyContin, Codeon, whatever. Consequences? Remember the pro-criminal administration? Nope. We are on our own. We must, our most dangerous enemy is from within our country. We don't come together in a crisis. We must set aside our individual differences that stem from religion, political, money, color, and the, and the epidemic of becoming the victim. Hurt speech, offensive language, attack on those lowlifes who dare to speak against and God forbid disagree, be a victim. Very good chance you could get a check from the government. We must talk to our children about fentanyl. "One pill will kill" must be stressed. Watch what the kids are doing and saying on social media. Put aside our petty, selfish, individualistic attitude and way of life. We are not superior to our fellow man because we perceive it that way. Through religion, political affiliation, wealth status, sex, color and IQ score, we come together with the common catalyst of the love of our children. If we can do that and say our prayers, I think we might have a chance. And we just recently had a, a nice bust of fentanyl. Thank you. And I hope you get more. And I address you today to begin a discussion, public talk, public, I don't know, warnings, discussions in your family, the radio, I don't know, but I'm worried about my grandchildren. And I like to see something happen here. I don't know what, that's what I'm here for. Maybe we could talk about it later.
Mayor, appreciate that.
But I'm concerned about the cellphone law. Crickets, I don't like that. That's public safety. And then I've always advocated for a bicycle path, one that the cars don't use. And another thing that really bugs me is City View. I live up there. I'm from Evanston, 63 years. I've never seen a road that I couldn't use. I quit using it in a courtesy of a sign that says, "Severe road damage might break your car," would be nice. My daughter lives up there, I live up there, I don't use it, I can't afford to wear and care. The point of all this is get it done, something needs to get done. And business as usual is definitely going to impede things, seems to have, but we're in a situation now where it's an emergency, people, it's life and death. And our government's handing us like a sacrificial lamb. We're on our own and I hope we can come together as a community, put aside our differences. I don't like Republicans, I don't like Mormons, I don't like Jews, none of that, not me, this is an example. We need to come together, talk about things. I swear a lot and if I make LDS people uncomfortable, I'll try not to swear, but let's still have a conversation.
Excellent.
And so, and it ain't to criticize, it's to stimulate.
I appreciate it, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your passion. One thing I will say to address to you is that with regard to City View Drive, we are partnering with YDOT to, to bring about some repairs and some improvements on that road. We're trying to accumulate right now the funding for that and I think that that, it's going to be a ways off, 2024, that is scheduled to, for City View Drive to be.
Could you put a sign up so my friends from Salt Lake don't take it and break their car?
Well, I'll have to see, I don't know. But what I say is, is that, that is coming. We recognize there needs some, some work, but we have to wait till we get the money.
Listening.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your passion.
Thanks for coming.
Do you want to?
I'm sorry?
The opioid funding that we have could help, I don't know if you guys are aware of that, I can't talk to it intelligently, but.
Sure. We have some opioid settlement funding that we have received and we anticipate to receive more settlement funding from several other pharmacies, so none of that money has been utilized yet. That'll come before the governing body to determine how the money is utilized. One of the options that Chief Ranish and I are passionate about and that we've been exploring is putting in, in education programs specific to opioids. Of course, other drugs will be involved, but, and specific to fentanyl, so that, into the schools and having that as, as part of their curriculum. It's a 14-week course and it's, it's something that we've discussed at staffing, so that's why Councilmember Lind is familiar with it. Once we receive all of the funding, we'll be better suited to know how much we have and what we can do, but we certainly see the need as well as dealing with law enforcement. Part of my job is this, the other half of my job, of course, is prosecution, so, so I'm with you and I'm passionate about it as well. So I'm hoping that we can, we can use that funding to stimulate some of that as well.
And do you have, how much?
I don't, I don't know what the, what the end dollar amount is yet because they're not even done. So the deadlines for the remaining pharmacies hasn't even come up yet. So.
Still in the works.
In the works, yep. But it is money that we are receiving, you know, free to, to the city of Evanston, all of the local municipalities around the United States are receiving it. Private attorneys worked really, really hard to, to fight for that opioid settlement money and then it's going through every state's attorney general's office or, or the like and being divvied out to the locals and to the counties.
Very good, thank you. I wasn't, wasn't aware. And there's just a lot that I'm not aware of and I'd really like to learn, I think we all need to, this is new.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Suicide prevention team also has a agreement with the school district that their kids' laptops, they have a screen saver that comes on and they have, we have a young man that releases those and one that he's recently produced is on fentanyl and it says, "One pill will kill."
Oh, nice, good.
So the kids hit those and they cannot remove that screen saver, so whatever the school decides, they get a selection and they're charred down and decide which ones come out, but that's one of them.
Well, in our spring break starting up, being kids, I did those stupid things I could, I remember. Just do what's available.
Yeah.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And just to let you know, I tell Dean about City View every time I see him because I do live at the top of it, so.
On City View, if you drive the speed limit, it's much better. I watch these cars that are beller, going up City View 40 miles an hour and then they hit those, those holes and it's a lot harder on them.
Turn the music way up.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Zech, please.
It does work. Brad I could hear and that lady back in the corner, I could hear her, but I'm tone deaf and I don't know if all you guys have got the wrong tone of voice or what, but I'd like to hear what goes on here. I ascertain from watching and reading lips a little maybe, but I can't hear. And so they just got a new, one of these at a meeting I go to at the pizza on second Saturday of the month, I could hear there, first time. And I'd like to hear here. Although the odd, I got another problem that you're probably aware of, but my horoscope today said, "Better do it on our side than to broadcast," so until we meet again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
We apologize for that and maybe we all need to speak up a little bit. It is what it is as far as, far as our.
I'm sitting right here.
Do you have a hard time hearing us?
We're going to sit, Kane.
I gotta sit in a little more.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to speak louder or whatever, so we'll try to do our best.
Sitting back here.
No, maybe so, maybe so. We can, we can do a better job of that, we'll try to do a better job.
I was going to be adjourned, I'm going to go from here.
You got out of jury duty because of the deed.
What's the problem? Oh, so mere, yeah?
I could hear from the judge, but I couldn't make any of the sound.
Uh-oh. Well, we'll, we'll try to do better.
I can't hear high voices.
Okay.
You know, I burn and stuff, I can't hear them talk. So if you have higher voices.
Sorry to hear that, we'll try to do better.
I can hear you.
Anyone else?
Keep going, Paul.
Well, we'll adjourn.